All right, seven o'clock. The college meeting of the Fairmont Planning Commission to order on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. And first, may I take a roll call and remember, please?
Barry Blitzer.
Here.
Jamie Green.
Here.
Mike Dura.
Here.
Dusty Lambert. Brian Magic. Houston Richardson.
Here.
Ron Street.
Here.
Dan Lee.
Here.
Brian Dan.
Here.
All right, and do you know, join me, stand and join me in the voice of the legions. Voice of the legions, this is a letter of the United States of America and due Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next thing on the agenda is election of officers. I will just say I asked you guys to consider nominating someone else. I have also been asked if I would be willing to continue to serve as president. I am willing to continue serving as president. But that said, if anyone else is interested, you know, I guess we open, did we open the floor to nominations? Is that right?
So. I'm now running Jamie Green for president. If that's what we are. That's what we're talking about.
Then we need a second.
Second.
Sure, the nomination, a second. We have any other nominations?
I don't think there are.
Wrong.
You have one closed and one wrong. You've got a nomination for wrong over here. You have a second there.
Can I lose everyone?
Yeah. Good.
Now we're here.
Can he hear us? Anyway, do we have a second for wrongs?
Yeah.
Okay. Are closed nominations? Nominations are closed. All in favor of me continuing as president, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? And we need your vice president next?
Yes.
That's it, right?
I'll go to you.
Okay. Uh, so, um, we open the floor for nominations for vice president.
I nominate Houston Richardson.
A nomination of Houston Richardson.
That would pay back.
Uh, you did.
Do we have any second?
I have second.
We have a second. We need any other nominations? All right, I'm going to close nominations and all in favor of Houston Richardson as the vice president of planning commission, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, Houston, congratulations.
Oh, you got to me.
All right, we're done with that. So approval, next thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes from October twentieth, twenty twenty-one. You all have a copy of those. You have a chance to review them.
I have one correction.
Okay, we have one correction.
It says that I wasn't here, but I was.
It says like right down through there, because like Tom Eddie came in.
Yeah, I did, I think I did come in like, yeah, a few minutes.
So, I mean.
Any, anything else? Yes, all right, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
For the first. Second. A motion of second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can you oppose? All right. Next up is a public hearing, a series of public hearings. The first one is a capital, uh, hearing on the capital improvement plan where we will review the proposed, proposed capital improvement plan for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year, and how it relates to the comprehensive plan. Turn over to you Shay or you good.
I'm going to go ahead.
All right, let's see the manager go first.
Thank you, Valerie.
Good evening, commissioners. I thank you so very much for your service because it is a lot of work on this commission. Not that any of the other ones are in a lot of work, but I know this one handles a lot of things for us. So thank you very much and congratulations, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President. All right, so what I'm here tonight, um, just according to our city code, we need to make a presentation to you regarding what we're proposing for our capital budget. So what I'm going to do is talk about fiscal year twenty-three, and again, this is just proposed. This is not planned to council yet. I'll go over that with you and then I'm going to turn it over to Shay so that he can speak about how some of the things that we are proposing relates to our comprehensive plan. Do you think it would be okay if I put this off to speak here? Okay, uh, so if you have your reports in front of you, they look like this. I don't think they're included in the pack ever. Really? I want to go through all of them. It's really kind of just reading it for you, but I think for the record and for anyone watching, that would be good. So of course, we start out with existing debt service. Now, this is always what's funded immediately first, of course. This is debt that we have on our public safety building, our parking garage, and the east side fire station. So the debt service, annual debt service for the public safety building is a hundred seventy-six thousand, three hundred seventy-six dollars. The debt service on the parking garage, oh, and I should say that that one goes through December of twenty thirty-three. The debt service on the parking garage is sixty-five thousand, four twenty-four. And the debt service on the new east side fire station, which will go through twenty, the year twenty forty, will be two hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. The fire station is not yet open, but we are hoping to have, um, I, I, I don't want to give a date, but I, but it is, it is coming soon. So we will have a grand opening when we move into the new fire station. So what we do in the process, the finance director and I, we go and meet with all of the department heads. We review what they're requesting for the year. And then normally there's a series of discussions and cuts because we just can't fund all the things that we would like to fund in any one fiscal year. So for our code department, we have a request for a vehicle and computers and software that totals thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. The planning department, and I will note that the planning department request and later on the parks request are some of the items that really, really tie into our comprehensive plan. So the planning department, we have downtown beautification at twenty thousand, city entryway at twenty thousand, and some wave finding signage for the community at five thousand. That total forty-five thousand dollars. Data processing is all of our IT work and we're looking at twenty thousand, seven hundred dollars for a series of upgrades to our hardware and our software. In the city hall department, we're looking at demolition and we put some demolition money into the capital fund and we put other demolition money into the operating fund. The money that's inherent for demolition are for demolitions of city-owned properties. That's why there are assets and we consider that a capital item. So we're proposing a hundred fifty thousand for demolition, five thousand dollars for a new shredder, some general remodeling of the floor at ten thousand, some PCs at four thousand, five hundred, and city hall computer server at thirty thousand. Those total one hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred for city hall. For the police department, we're looking at cruisers, four of them. I will note that we are still having difficulties getting vehicles in. So what has happened is we're looking at what we didn't get in prior fiscal years and having to carry this over. And I told chief, I said, we're going to get to a point, we're going to have to have eight in one year. So we're hoping to avoid that, but we do still have some cruisers that we just, we can't get the vehicles. We just have the same situation in public works with some of our trucks.
The cruisers that were already approved for prior years, does that money also carry over?
Yeah, we try to carry that over, especially if we feel somewhat confident that the order is going to be fulfilled. Uh, we will actually encumber that and say, okay, that's last fiscal year.
So if we get, well, we're going to get eight at one time, we're going to get a double budget hit.
Right, we don't want to, we don't want to do that. We want to try to avoid that, but it's kind of scary when you see that they just keep saying, you know, twelve months, eighteen months. Um, so it's going to be difficult for us. So the four cruisers, about forty-five thousand a piece at a hundred and eighty thousand. When you rate our units, three thousand, thirteen new PCs, um, at eleven thousand, seven hundred. You're going to see a lot of, um, computers. And I will say, over the years, we haven't done that great of a job of budgeting, you know, how many we need in each year. So we're getting to a point now where so many of them don't have the upgrades that are needed and we're having to do a lot at once. We're going to still try to get it back on a more even situation where we're only getting maybe three or four for a department and not thirteen all at one time. But that's what we're looking at for this year for the police department. Three, uh, vests and carriers at three thousand dollars. Refrigerator for the kitchen, fifteen hundred, and a police computer server at twenty thousand. So those police items add up to two hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars. So in the fire department, we're looking at a backup generator for Watson Station at sixty thousand. Every year you'll see replacement of fire hose and bunker gear. That's just something we have to do on a yearly basis. The fire hose is seven thousand and the bunker gear is twenty-one thousand, six hundred. We have rescue cribbing at three thousand and four new PCs at thirty-six hundred. In the streets department, we're looking at replacing three snowplow trucks at a hundred fifty thousand, a new loader at ninety, two new spreaders at sixteen thousand, for a total of two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in our streets department. The street lighting department, we want to replace street light poles on River Crest and Massacre Boulevard. Those will total thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. The city garage is looking at a ultrasonic tablet and advanced, uh, toolkit for them to use to assess the vehicles at five thousand dollars. Then in the parks department, we're really trying to put some money towards parks because again, we believe that that was an area that we were lacking in funding. And this council and the council before have been very supportive of getting our parks back to where we need to be, having outdoors spaces for folks to go to, and they're just making sure that we have upgrades and, and the facilities. So you will see that we are spending a good bit, or at least are proposing the council spend some money on our parks. So we're looking at Moore's Park to repair the steps and railing, which truly needs done, at ten thousand dollars. Windmill Park, we have fencing around field two at seventy-five thousand, a metal roof on the pavilion and restroom at eight thousand. Windmill Park playground equipment at five, and Windmill Park basketball court sports coding at fifteen thousand. And I will note that that fifteen thousand does not completely cover the cost, but we've had some generous donators. And I don't have their names, but if you have that information, we do have some folks that donated for the basketball courts, uh, sports coding, and that will help us to bring that project to fruition. Morgantown Avenue Mini Park, we want to put a new sign there at five thousand. And we need a back, mid-sized backhoe at sixty-five thousand dollars. So that comes to a hundred and eighty-three thousand. And then we did put on here the parking fund, which is again, not our general fund, capital fund, but it's a separate fund. But the parking garage needs elevator replacement, unfortunately, forty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. And also the entry pay station is in, not in very good shape at all. And we're looking at replacing that at fifty-three thousand dollars. So that would total ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars for the parking garage for grand total proposed fiscal year twenty-three capital project of one million, six hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars. So you have the rest, the other four years in your packet. I'm not going to read through each item there. Again, these are proposed, the future years, change significantly almost every year when we go back through and we're adding items for our new year. We always look at those out years as well and see what are, what are the changes we need to make. Um, but if you have any questions specifically on any of the items that I mentioned?
I got a quick question, the comments. Uh, if a bar, or I know this, or at least I think that they were looking at replacing their current rescue truck. Where are we on that? Is that?
Uh, the rescue truck has already been forwarded. We're just waiting.
Okay, so that's covered.
Yeah, that was, I think, last fiscal year or maybe even the fiscal year before that.
With any of the, any of the departments, whether it's code or planning, police, fire, whatever, are there some significantly needed items that just didn't quite make the cut because there were things that were more needed, but we're really going to do with them that we could pay for with the code's money?
No, we can try to get at least the top, anything that I cut, we discuss and we, we either just move to the next year or we did something like that.
I just wondered if any things that, that we need to look at, maybe cover some of the armpit money?
Um, possibly, you have to be real careful about spending the armpit money on capital. They do have some new rules in the final rule that do allow more freedom in the capital expenditures, but we still have to look at what the, you know, what those requirements would be.
And the last comment I got, you had mentioned how long it takes to get police crew. A lot of people know that that's not uncommon with anything. And myself, I've ordered two semi trucks that I can't get for eleven months.
Right.
I can't get at all fifty-three foot van trailers. Tried to order a half a million dollar piece of equipment a couple of weeks ago. They said, yeah, you can get it in November. Um, and, and I don't care if we're looking, it, it took me six weeks to get a starter for, for a big truck.
Oh, no, it is, you're right. It's not just the.
I'm saying all that to say this, is there things, are there things that we need to maybe start looking at and maybe we need to order now, even though we thought we could get it, be needed next year? And then in most cases, like with us, we ordered a, a material I have there, ordered twenty-five thousand dollars. And we said, listen, we really don't want it till July. And they saw it was going to be there in September anyway. But if it comes in earlier, there's so many people wanting them, we could say, hey, give them our spot and we'll take it, you know, then. Maybe the city could do that so that if we're looking at fourteen months to get something and it stays at fourteen months, we get it and we want it in the right budget year, but we had to order earlier.
Well, the difficulty is, um, in, in the government spending, we're not allowed to order because that, um, come, becomes an encumbrance. And we're not allowed, the council's not allowed to do that for most items in capital to say that, that let's order it now, but we're not going to pay for it till fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. We're not allowed to do that.
Okay.
We can do certain things like debt service and bonds for certain requirements, but not just for normal capital.
Okay.
But I hear exactly what you're saying. That's what we're struggling with, right?
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
You're doing a lot of upgrading in your IT department.
Yes.
Are you staying with one company? Uh, don't start mixing and matching because that's a mess.
No, we're trying to be very consistent with who we're using and what we're using. And I highly, our IT folks are very, very good at looking at all the options and then going with, you know, the one, one or two vendors, one or two different vendors that you have.
Yeah, because if we get a lot in, sometimes they don't communicate with each other and it just costs you a whole bunch of headaches.
You are, you're absolutely right.
Okay.
So, yeah, we do, we do try to do that. Yes, sir.
What's the status on the Norwood, um, playground? Uh, they got that big grant from, uh, can you live in?
Yes, I think we're about a month, we're about a month away from design, six weeks from full design. Would that be correct?
That's correct. Very soon we'll have a schematic level design, is what we call it in the profession. And as well, we are just wrapping up a few loose ends to make sure that we have all the areas secured and needed in order to accomplish the park as intended. Um, and so we are still working with the Valles and CUC to get that completed. So we should have large updates on that for the public very soon. And CUC is hard at work on the design process.
But it's definitely a project that is moving forward. Yes. I'm very happy about that. This is very exciting. Anything else on any of these items?
I'd just like to add how happy I am to see Windmill Park on your.
I know, it is very exciting. It is, it is. Because, you know, parks have always been special to me and, you know, we, we have a good bit of the nice part, you know, nice parks, nice space. Um, but, you know, you, you still have to maintain them. You have to make sure that folks are going there and they've got the equipment that's fun and, and safe to play on. And, um, so we're real happy that council's been willing to put money towards this. And I would imagine they will, you know, they may make some tweaks, but I would imagine that they will continue to do that. Because that was part of council's goals.
Excellent.
With your demolitions, is the one, is there one company doing the complete whole demolitions of the city? Or did you have to bid them out the different?
Well, right now, we do have one company that we did a bid and they have the twenty-four properties that they're currently working on.
Whoever it is, they did a wonderful job before the town had to be, you caught them.
It is reclaimed and they are doing a very good job.
They did a nice job, a lot of them, if I was on council, I knew the one I brought up to you, that the, the neighbor would not buy the property the way they left it.
Yeah, we want to make sure that that's a complete demolition, not, they're not just walking away and leaving a mess. So they're doing a very good job. Anything else?
No question.
I'm going to turn it over to you Shay, and you can talk about how some of the specific projects do tie in with the comprehensive plan.
Yes, thank you, Valerie.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so from the planning and development department's perspective, as the advisory staff review all the planning commission, um, just to summarize and to reflect the context, of course, when bringing this up before you all, we're only talking about the capital budget. This does not include all the other budgets, um, and the other financing options we have for our comprehensive plan projects, which may include the general fund, the PIB funds, or grant funding that we may receive. So, um, our staff report in the information tonight mostly pertaining just to the capital fund there. So with that, uh, this year, four of the twenty-seven goals from the comprehensive plan that were identified as needing physical capital funding are being funded. Those four goals are implementing the wave fighting program, identifying new opportunities to, um, expand public art, which we consider part of the downtown beautification line potentially. The landscaping along key corridors, once again, on the downtown beautification budget. And then they continue to improve city parks and recreation areas. I just want to talk about that last one there for a moment since that is, that is receiving a substantial increase in funding. And I believe this is an example of where the leadership of the city is aiming for quality over quantity. And we are definitely going to make some substantial improvements to our public parks that have been much needed for some time as the president and the city manager have posted, you all mentioned as well. So we were very excited even to see that a couple of the items maybe didn't make the list and we were quite okay with that because we are achieving quality goals at a very good level, it looks like, going forward with this proposed plan. One of the items that was removed, uh, was our rail trail funding, but projected to return in the following year. That was truthfully funded, I think at about twenty thousand dollars. But, um, from planning and development's perspective, we're not concerned with that at this moment because we are intending to use the tax increment finance district funding, uh, for several aspects of that during this calendar year. So we are not concerned if we don't have the twenty thousand dollars for that. And we think we're still going to get a lot done on those rail trail projects. So we can see that here, and if you look through the list, there's twenty-seven items. Um, and I think if we look through those, some of these may not, may not end up requiring any capital funding once it's said and done. That's another thing to consider is not all these actually may or may not require funding in the end. And we are, our departments continue to work to make substantial progress and completion on these items. Um, and to report that out to you all annually, as we're going to discuss here at the end of meeting tonight on a later agenda item. So overall, the staff does recommend the proposed, uh, capital improvement plan for the city of Fairmont, and we find it, um, more than sufficient to obtain our goals that city council has set forth for us and you all as well in our comprehensive plan.
So then you'll just talk about the comments, really?
Yeah.
Is there anyone here that'd like to speak, uh, in favor of the capital improvement plan? Anyone who'd like to speak against the capital improvement plan? We'll close the public hearing on that and we need to vote on this, correct? All right. entertain a motion to approve the capital improvement plan of recommendation to the council. So a motion?
Second.
Second, and Commissioner Yan. Kirsten, if you take a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Blitzer?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Dura?
Yes.
Commissioner Magic? Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Ween?
Yes.
Commissioner Yan?
Yes.
All right. Motion passed. Moving on, we have PC twenty-two zero-one amending Article Four pertaining to article organization, home occupations, multifamily residences, restaurant lounges, and retail and services manufactured homes. Shay, I'll turn it over to you for a discussion about what's happening here.
Yeah, so in, in summary, this is one of three proposed text amendments to the zoning code. We decided to start out the calendar year with one that has been of substantial interest to our citizens over the last couple of years, even before, um, I was hired on for the city, and that's been home occupations, especially with the pandemic. Uh, so that's what the majority of this pertains to. But in summary, um, I'm going to skip over home occupation of Norwood. We're proposing to remove the multifamily residence use standards as those are now covered within the individual zoning district and these are duplicative or additional standards that no longer need to be applied to those types of uses uh, thanks to the amendments that were passed earlier in twenty twenty-one. We're also proposing to do two things to restaurant lounges. We're proposing to retitle it to restaurant with alcohol sales, believing that may be more obvious to folks reading the zoning code about what we're talking about there. Um, as in our dialogue with our stakeholders, businesses, and citizens, we've seen restaurant now kind of generate some confusion about what that really means when they don't read the legal definition of the code. The other thing we're doing is restaurant lounges, for some odd reason, is currently regulated in two sections of use standards, right? One right after the other. And we're just going to merge the two, um, to combine them into a single standard and then do some minor adjustments to those, uh, regulations in regards to alcohol sales. But other than that, it's primarily staying the same. Then we're also, um, proposing to replace one of the sections we just eliminated for restaurants with alcohol sales uh, with a new use standard section for manufactured home sales and services. This will simply require that there be buffer yards for manufactured home sales. Um, so when you put over homes and stuff on a large lot to sell those, you have to have nice buffer yard compartments around it so you don't negatively impact adjacent properties. This is especially pertinent with these uses typically have very large gravel or asphalt-covered lots and can tend to have, can tend to have score water or other types of land maintenance issues that may impact adjacent property owners. So by acquiring these buffer yards, we intend to hopefully mitigate some of those potential nuisances to those adjacent owners. Now, back to the bulk of it, though, uh, we are promote, proposing some substantial amendments to the whole occupation regulations. As they currently stand, we classify home occupations into two categories, minor and major. We also then limit home occupation based upon various general descriptions of a list of types of businesses. And then it's up to myself as the zoning administrator to determine which of the two categories your proposed home business may fall into, whether that minor or major. When it comes to actually where this is allowed currently, minor is allowed everywhere that you can have a home. So as long as you're living somewhere, you can have a minor home occupation. But major home occupations are prohibited from the general residential district. If we can recall from some of our previous discussions in twenty twenty-one, general residential encompasses about two-thirds of the single-family housing within our city. So by that, we have barred two-thirds of single-family homeowners and renters from being able to have, uh, majority of home occupation type businesses, uh, that they tend to run, especially now with online sales and personal services and the way those things have changed over the, over the last few decades. And the pandemic exacerbated that. Um, staff has found that to be a concern. So what we are proposing is a set of home occupation regulations that are even across the board that generate the same standards for all home businesses to create clarity. to create clarity for all home businesses so that they understand exactly what rules apply to them and what may not. And so as an example of what can generate confusion currently, if you have a home tutoring business, you may have one client at your home. However, there is no stated limit where lawyers, architecture firms, engineering, or other types of office professional businesses, they may be conducting from your home. So with that, you could theoretically have an entire family over as your clients for your architecture firm, but you can only have one violin student over for your music tutoring. What we're proposing is that regardless of the type of home business you have, you may never have more than two clients present. And this would, we believe, accommodate a wide range of home occupation businesses while also respecting and maintaining the residential quality of our neighborhoods. For example, if you ran a home salon, you could have one person in the chair and one person waiting. You could have two clients over for your law firm, you could have two music students over for tutoring. If you wanted to have a Pilates studio, you could have maybe a couple clients, a couple show up, or maybe two clients there, and we think that's efficient. So that's a few examples of how that two limit can apply broadly to a lot of businesses and hopefully still limit the traffic and occupancy and other things that are happening there in our homes and in our residential neighborhoods. To continue, we are setting nuisance standards that you can't have any light noise above ambient levels, odors, or other nuisances that could be generated because of your business be perceivable from beyond the property line. So if you're conducting a home business, we shouldn't be able to notice. That's a general guideline. If you're doing it right, we shouldn't even be able to tell, except for, as a note, we're also proposing that all home businesses would qualify for a two-square-foot size sign, a very quaint and small sign in which they could advertise their business. That sign would be subject to all other regulations for the sign code, including setbacks. It also would be prohibited from being illuminated in any sense, internally, externally, neon sign, all of that would be prohibited. So think about just a small little yard sign or small little sign, neon porch, just to at least help guide people to your home-based business. We are also continuing to ban any outdoor storage related to your home-based business. No materials, no goods can be stored in the exterior of your property regardless of fencing or other types of landscaping or physical barriers. You cannot do anything related to vehicle repair or sales in order to prevent those nuisances, prevent the accumulation of vehicles, junk parts, and chemicals on properties, neon would be typically present. And there was one other change that then I forgot in my long speech here that you all have put up with. And then as well, we would make sure that it is clear to them about hours of operation will be between seven a.m. and seven p.m., and that they are applicable to all other building codes, that they have to sign an affidavit acknowledging all of these rules as currently stands. They have to have a city business license and maintain that business license, which also requires a secretary of state business license that still has the same size restriction, no more than twenty-five percent of gross floor area of your dwelling unit. And we usually use the tax assessors' office data to determine that. And that the vehicle, if there is a vehicle related to the home occupation, it may not be above a ten-thousand-pound gross vehicle mass rating, and that would be essentially a full-size pickup truck. It couldn't be any larger than that. So no large box trucks, no super-duty trucks, nothing that, you know, would then maybe change the residential nature and your use of your property. So it would be what would be considered making a small food truck have the largest you could get in that ten-thousand-pound category. So those are our proposals there. And with this, like I said, the elimination of the minor-major categories and bringing it down to just a one single category of home occupation that the same standards apply to across the board. We believe that this would increase confidence in home business owners. This would help foster small business and hopefully make it easier for folks to come forward and be honest about running a home business. This is one of those things that are sometimes tricky to regulate because if they're doing it right, we shouldn't know they're there anyways. And so it's hard for us to maybe know unless we see them advertising their business somewhere. So with that, we believe that this will have a positive impact as we recover from the pandemic and allow for greater flexibility in our neighborhoods. There were many other considerations that we had regarding this, so I'd be happy to entertain any questions or comments from the commissioners for the public.
Do commissioners have any questions?
This would be, this pertains to general neighborhood, all residential areas?
Yes, Commissioner Yan is correct. It would apply equally to all districts, so it would help.
You mentioned about vehicles. I understand about parking, that would be limited. But this is an example which handles your neighborhood. It's got a kid home business selling snacks. Huge truck outside. But according to the statute, they couldn't get rid of it because the truck, as big as it was, did not exceed the weight of parking in a residential area. There's one you said of having these vehicles, would that stop something like that?
It depends on, once again, on the vehicle classification. If we look at the staff report at the beginning of this, we included a diagram from the U.S. Department of Transportation that kind of shows that. And we can see ten thousand gross vehicle weight is equivalent to a full-size pickup truck, a cargo van, a step van, so a very sturdy tiny food truck, or a minivan. So a minivan is also a class-three vehicle. To go above that, you would have to look at a walk-in van, or a delivery van, a box truck, or a heavy-duty pickup truck.
This was a box truck, it was a large box truck.
Yeah, so a box truck would therefore be prohibited. As a class-three vehicle, that would not be permitted.
So how, let me ask, how are you going to regulate?
Currently, right now, we actually get support from two other departments to regulate home occupations. Code enforcement is very wonderful, the planning and development department helps us out. They drive our neighborhoods quite often and usually report anything that they notice. And same with the finance office, who is constantly vigilant to make sure that every business operating in the city is licensed. So we have those two departments to assist us. As well, we are looking into, with our hopeful increase in staffing in the near future, we are looking to, as a department, be out in the neighborhoods more often ourselves. So we'll have all three departments trying to be vigilant to make sure that these are being adhered to as well. We do find our citizens to be vigilant and usually come to us with any concerns or issues regularly. So we've had successful damage so far.
The vigilance of the, at least if I, if I, we've discussed this, they won't come forward. The gentleman we talked to, talked to him again, and he will not come forward on it. He said, "I don't know, I'd reap repercussions with them compared to me." And he said, "This is the code's joint." Well, you said the code comes through, and I said, "The code comes through." He said, "If they come through, how come I know it and I see the signs of it, but the code doesn't?" He told me this yesterday. And he told me what he sees. He said, "Why can't the code see that?" And I said, "I don't know." I said, "Cole, Shane, Tom." He said, "No, I'm not going to call him." And you tried to get a hold of him, and I have to give you credit. You returned his calls, but he is, he's old enough and has illness in the family, and he doesn't want any hassle. But he's concerned that the neighborhood has this problem and the code's not picking up on it.
I can say, with that particular instance, just in that one context, without stating the addresses or names, code enforcement did follow up and was able to make a determination about some unauthorized adjustments to the property and enhancements.
It was unauthorized, he was correct.
Yeah, that's correct, and we were able to follow up with that, and they are working to get that aid compliance. So we, and especially that particular, your neighborhood, we have a very good code enforcement officer there.
I depend on the internet, and it's being stopped, or it's...
The exact context, I don't want to discuss openly, just because it is an open violation for one of our citizens. But I can't say that they are working with them and we are addressing it.
I asked only him, they are working on it.
They are. And that particular code enforcement official has been so vigilant that it has caused some issues as he's found things that were maybe missed for several years. And they're not just forward to us, which caused some heartburn for a few of our citizens, but he's been pretty good, and I hope we maintain that level of quality. And Ken, who's in charge of that department, seems to be hiring individuals who have that integrity level and that skill level. So I'm hoping we can maintain that. And that's going to be what we have to do as staff, is we're going to have to make sure everyone's trained and they're being vigilant, and even if it's uncomfortable at times, we do need to ask our citizens to follow the regulations passed by council.
Well, also, there was a safety issue. Like we discussed, it had to be inspected. If it was illegal or non, if it was being done, it was the safety of the person was going to be in there. Thank you, Shayden.
Let me ask you this, Shayden. Did these little places start popping up all over the city? You know, have a lawyer here and something else up the other side of the block. Do they have to meet the handicap accessibility to their device? They would, wouldn't they?
Generally, not in my experience. And the reason being is because of the degree of business in which they're conducting. So we are still prohibiting, like, window display, retail sale, product, and things like that. And so when they conduct these small home-based businesses, and because of the way they're classified by building code, they're not required to update for the Americans for Disability Act for their clientele, unfortunately. So now, however, as a business owner, there are many things that can apply to that, such as they need to make sure they accommodate anybody who requests services and make sure that they are being compliant with several rights laws as they are applicable to those businesses. When they, and this is what we hope for, that they are so successful, if that does become an issue, that they will move into a commercial space. And they will get a proper space where it's more accessible to the public. If they are getting maybe a decent number of foot traffic, it becomes less convenient to try to accommodate those individuals by meeting them at maybe a local restaurant or coffee shop that is accessible to provide services. So that's where we hope that goes in that direction, because, of course, we don't want any citizen left out of any services or goods that may be provided. Now, if a homeowner does want to update optionally, they are permitted to do so. We do have special exceptions for handicap ramps and accessibility ramps to get in and out of residences within our zoning code to make sure we can accommodate everybody the best we can. So we do at least give them the option to do so.
Would the residents of the area still have the opportunity to contest to build before they build, or to stop if they feel that there'd be a nuisance?
At this point in time, no home occupation goes up for conditional use permit. They're either outright allowed or they're prohibited. So we have not had...
They're not prohibited, they're in there, but they're causing the nuisance. Do the neighbors have the opportunity to give them out?
Yeah, especially if they violate any standard currently written or as proposed, then, of course, the city has the right to go and request that they cease operation of the business. Hopefully, it never goes that far, hopefully, we just get it remediated, get them compliant. But yes, they have that right to report that to us, and we have the right to follow up and make sure that they are compliant. So, because we don't want any negative impact from this, right? We don't want anybody making a lot of noise, or creating a bunch of odor, or smoke, or putting junk in their yard, you know, waste that started from their business. We don't want things like that happening. So we will make sure to follow that, and neighbors have their right to report it. And from my perception, unless there's extremely special circumstances, there won't be variance is considered for that. I mean, you really have to have some very unique circumstances to your property to make you qualify for variance to these types of regulations. So that wouldn't even be entertained. It's either comply or don't, or do not conduct a business at your home.
Maybe if he was on a larger, in a sort of congested area on each side, then I've seen a lot of... In my general residential area, there's been problems with that, like going on. It had been cleared up in past, my past city councils, so it's just... It's not, it's not him being antagonistic, I'm trying to see what may come along.
The other staff, and I just want to express that I greatly appreciate that because of the protection of our residential neighborhood characteristics and our peace, and our enjoyment and wealth of those neighborhoods is very important to us. And we don't want to jeopardize any of it.
We've had several homes in our area that we could flip that made really nice. If you've seen before, they're really junky. They're really nice homes now. And I can imagine someone that wanted to buy one of those now, that finds this out and says, "Well, wait a minute, I may..." Because our homes are close together. And I have limited parking in front, and I have this lawyer next to me. I just can see where I would be hesitant moving into the city. I think I'll go to Pelosim now, or maybe Kingmont, yeah. I can see that as being opposite of being a positive for the general residential area. I don't know, that's just me.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? I'd like to open the hearing to the public. Does anyone here speak in favor of this amendment to the zoning code? Is anyone here to oppose this amendment to the zoning code, who'd like to speak? Do I have to close the public hearing? Commissioners have any other comments? Intertain motion to approve PC twenty-two oh one.
Correct.
Yes, correct.
Motion to Commissioner Blitso, I'm second.
Second.
Second for Commissioner Ween. Kirsten, can you take a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Blitso?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Jura?
Yes.
Commissioner Magic? Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Straight?
No.
Commissioner Ween? Commissioner Yan?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. And the next thing on the agenda is PC twenty-two oh two, amending Article Two, definitions and measurements pertaining to restaurant lounges, sales and services, manufacturing and sales artisan, and retail and service manufactured homes. Go ahead, Shayden.
Oh, yes, thank you. This proposed set of zoning code text amendments here impacts the items as the president just read. So we are creating a definition for manufactured home sales and services. This is actually already in our permitted use chart. We just didn't need it defined because it was covered under another definition, which we are proposing to eliminate, which is the sales and services of automobile, boat, heavy equipment, and tractor homes, which is now going to be covered under two different definitions. So you can read that legal definition there of what we think manufactured home sales and services are. Then we are proposing an amendment to manufacturing sales artisan, in which we state that these uses are subject to the same use standards and size limitations as retail and service uses. In our zoning code, which is a unique approach for most cities in West Virginia, we regulate several business types by square footage. And so, given that these are similar in nature, because they are generally a retail business, they will be subject to the same use restrictions and size restrictions as retail services. We just want to make sure that language is clear, there's not a loophole there. As well, we are changing the name of restaurant slash lounge to restaurant without alcohol sales. And that is the total of those proposed amendments.
Commissioners, have any questions for Shayden?
Are there any businesses currently in the Maryland City Councilments that the manufactured home sales and services would impact?
No, not to my interpretation of it, and my understanding. We have one business that sells parts and components and accessories, but they don't sell manufactured homes.
Right.
And so we don't believe this will impact existing businesses. And so we don't believe this will impact any existing businesses. We just want to make sure this is clear for future businesses if they intend to come forward into our industrial exempt areas.
Any other questions? I'm going to open the public hearing on this amendment to the public. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this amendment to the zoning code? Does anyone here would like to speak against this amendment to the zoning code? Can we go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve PC 2202?
So.
Go ahead.
I make the motion to approve.
And motion, Commissioner Jura?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Richardson. Richardson, can you take your roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Blitso?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Jura?
Yes.
Commissioner Magic? Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Straight?
Yes.
Commissioner Ween?
Yes.
Commissioner Yan?
All right, motion passes. Next thing on the agenda is PC 2203, amending Article Three, zoning districts pertaining to permitted use chart related to multiple permitted uses across multiple zoning districts. Shay, I'm going to turn it over to you one more time.
Thank you, Mr. President. With these amendments here, I won't go over them in full detail just because of the nature of this chart. But this, what this says, these are amendments to Table Three A. This dictates where you can perform a land use, conditionally perform a land use, or where it's prohibited. So we are proposing several amendments to this in follow-up to some of it being earlier stuff we just discussed in the two prior petitions, but also to adjust some what we believe were inconsistencies that were left over from the previous version of the permitted uses where they were written out in each district and before we amended the zoning code last year. Because we just essentially copied and pasted them over into this chart. But there were odd things, but I'll get to a couple of those examples in a moment. So we are proposing, for example, we are eliminating the two types of home occupations potentially. So we're bringing that down to one line, and you can see the strike through there for home occupations, where we are eliminating the text and bringing it down to just one line of, within the table. We are looking at some changes, that's how we regulate cemeteries. This is, there's just some odd ways that we currently permit cemeteries in the city where they're outright allowed in some districts, they're conditionally permitted in others, they're banned in others. And it's, in my professional opinion, sorry, it's inconsistent. It's, we're looking at how we would think where cemeteries belong in our community or when we should allow for them and not. It didn't make much sense in terms of how they would impact in case of land uses or our infrastructure and so forth. For example, we are proposing to add them to the recreation district, which might seem a bit odd, but when you think about cemeteries in the long run, historically, they weren't green spaces for public use. And quite frankly, when they get full, when they are done, and the mausoleums and the plaques are all used up, they typically revert to public green space. And so looking at that and how they're used in that way, we are proposing to have them conditionally permitted for recreational, these own areas, which will still give the public input about whether we should or should not allow them. Because once you have a cemetery, it typically doesn't go away. So it's definitely something we probably want to talk about before we just allow for cemeteries anywhere and everywhere. We're also expanding institutional uses to the technology district. That's important because it covers hospitals, and we just had Lawn Health open a small facility there, which qualified under a different legal definition. But just to make sure in case they change their business approach, those uses are covered and can be permitted going forward. We adjusted animal grooming and boarding to kind of match up with animal care facilities in a way that made sense. We adjusted, one small adjustment to bars and nightclubs, make them conditionally permitted and make corridor commercial, as we already have a few in those districts. And that is a higher intensity commercial district. They will remain prohibited in the neighborhood mixed use district. But you can see others, the highlights are in yellow as we've made adjustments to this. There is a correction that we're, we made a typo in our earlier zoning code and didn't catch it. Like convenience stores with fuel cells should always have been prohibited for neighborhood mixed use, and we just made a typo and accidentally put a conditional use allowance there. So we're proposing to strike that and remove that. Then, for example, some of the older regulations that we're proposing to adjust it makes sense to get on the restaurants and restaurant lounges. You can have a restaurant without public sales in the technology district, but you couldn't have a restaurant. And there were items like this that were very nonsensical, so we're proposing to adjust that. And hopefully bring that in line with what we believe is a reasonable and fair just use of land. Then I think that's it for the most part, other than the minor adjustments to a few other definitions. This is something that the staff is also looking for input from you all as the commissioners. I think the more hands we have on where we allow for uses and don't allow for uses is important. So if there is a discussion on this or comments in the public, I'd be happy to hear it from you all, or if there's any concerns with some of these proposals. That's all I have.
Questions or comments from the commissioners?
What specific district is the hospital in?
The one down next to Fairmont State University?
Yeah.
It is in the education district currently, although we are proposing to bring it into the university district when we create that district and zone it in later on. So.
Okay, nobody's covered. I answer my question real quick.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a question for Shay. Every time I look at my annual report, I see that four different grants are given out to different, from the state. And are they, are you still applying for those grants?
Yes, and particularly, I want to try to achieve, obtain one of those grants for some improvements to our street skating and civil infrastructure. Or one of the issues that that brought to me off here as a director is about how it's, is it difficult to walk around sometimes, especially if you don't have places to sit down or rest, or good crosswalks, or safe sidewalks. And so we have applied, but we have not at this time received those grants.
I think they gave ones out for this year. I think it's on December, Parkersburg. That, I think I don't know, I know two others. So I just was curious if you're still applying for those grants?
Yeah, we will continue to seek those out. We find them very valuable for our community, for the kids.
I think up to a thousand?
Up to.
Any other questions or comments for Shay? To open the public hearing on PC 2203, is there anyone here speak in favor of amending Article Three? Okay, is there anyone here opposed to the amendments to Article Three? Close the public hearing on PC 2203 and entertain a motion to approve that amendment to Article Three. And a motion for Commissioner Ween, have a second.
Second.
Second for Commissioner Straight. Christian, can you take your roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Blitso?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Jura?
Yes.
Commissioner Magic?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Straight?
Yes.
Commissioner Ween?
Yes.
Commissioner Yan?
Yes.
All right, moving right along. Public hearings is set for February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Do we have any?
At this point in time, no citizen has submitted a petition to the planning commission.
All right, nothing listed under new business. Do we have any citizen petitions to hear? First, I don't believe anybody signed up. Is that correct? Okay, this is now Mr. President, nobody signed up. Commissioner comments. Mr. Richardson, starting with you? If you really want to hear it.
Sure. It's good to see everyone today in good health, and I will try and do the best that I can as being a VP of the planning commission. Thank you.
Commissioner Jura?
Oh, I've got nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Blitso?
I'd just like to say thanks to Shay and his department, as well as Valerie and all the departments for all the work they put into this. Between the capital improvement plan, which I know is just one part of a big budget mess we have to deal with every year, a lot of work is in that hanging. And I'd just like to thank you for things like this. This is very detailed, very informative, and you did an amazing job. You and your people did an amazing job of keeping us involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I would, I, Gary just stole the words out of my mouth, so I will just second everything that you just said. I've done a much less detailed comprehensive capital improvement plan before, and I can't imagine to work your way into this. Mr. Ween?
No, I agree with what you both have said, and your report here is very impressive as well. So congratulations. Thanks for all the hard work, for all of you.
Mr. Yan?
No comments.
Mr. Straight?
I heard what you said.
Well said. All right, moving on to planning and development annual report, which is, your color copied picture of the bridge on the front, should have been on your desk when you got here. Shay, I'm going to turn this over to you. Yan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to go through this annual report in detail, but I do just want to make a couple notes. This is a requirement from the state code. However, not to this degree, we are required to report to you all as the planning commission the city's progress on anything related to your purview. So whether that's the capital improvement plan, our comprehensive plan, or anything else related to the work that you all do. But just to take it a step further, although she's not here at the moment, I want to thank the city manager, Valerie Means, because she had brought forward to our department that she wanted to do what's called KPIs, key performance indicators, for each department in the year 2022. And planning development decided to get a head start on it, because we already had to report out to you annually, which then we might not have done in the past. We are making sure that this gets done going forward. And so we have put together a more, more comprehensive review of all the work our department has done and the city has done related to your all's work and your advising of us as a city. So if we go to the first KPI chart here, I just want to touch on a couple things that we're looking forward to. We did only have three conditional use permits within 2021, so we did see a decline from 2019 and potentially earlier years of those. Those, I can say too, as a staff member for the BZA, were primarily around non-conforming uses and where businesses will change their non-conforming use status. So one example was we had a printing company go out of business, and a very large retailer got approved to move into their old building, which was much larger than was permitted in that zoning district. But because it was a printing business before, it's a very large building, and they got approved to move into that following they had to meet several conditions in order to get that approval. We had nine variance requests, which our target, and why we've been working so aggressively with some zoning code updates, is zero. We would ideally, in an ideal year, never have a variance need. If we have a zoning code that's trained well enough, there should not be a need for variance. We should have all considerations built in to hopefully create fair and just use of land for all of our citizens and businesses. We had no appeals, which is always good too. And then, of course, as you all well know, we did thirteen zoning code text amendments last year, which is very substantial. So we did a lot of work last year, everyone together, to get that through, and we appreciate that. We did, we did nine minor subdivisions, so not as many as we think we had anticipated even. But we'll see how that goes moving forward, and just because our development has been slowed down because of the pandemic. So we do expect an uptake as people merge and divide their property. So that's what that covers mostly. We had no major subdivisions for the third year in a row. We had several that were pending and were wanting to apply, but they did not come forward. So we'll see if 2022 holds any of those, because those directly come to you all. We have additional review in our office and run through some either concerns or comments with them, and then ultimately, you all make the recommendation for their approval or disapproval. So if we do have any that will be coming before you, we had no abandonments last year, which was a significant decrease from the prior year, where we had seven applications for right-of-way abandonments. And we did no annexations in 2021 either. The HPRC was a little busier than normal. We have a lot of, a lot of signs going up in downtown. That's mostly what they cover, but also a couple renovations and some hopeful additions to new businesses we hope to see in the coming future. So the continue on, we continue to see an increase in sign and fence permits because of pandemic. And then our office has also been vigilant about issuing what we call a zoning verification letter, where that is something we give to realtors or property buyers or potential business owners to let them know what the zoning regulations are for a particular property within the city. So we either give them a piece of mind or clarification that what they're proposing is a conditional use or prohibited. So we issued a lot of those last year as well. Our department was busy with grants, applying for 1.9 million, two of those, which is a substantial part of that amount, will not be announced or awarded until this calendar year. But we did receive $169,500 in grants in 2021. So we are, at the city charter, our department is primarily responsible for grant writing and management for the city. So, and well, it usually impacts the stuff you all approved in the comprehensive plan. And then we also had a increase in our marketing and communications efforts. We have increased usage of local platforms, and it even started a podcast to help get information out about how certain city services work and certain departments or our partnering organizations as well, such as today, an episode was released about the Fairmont Community Development Partnership. And the work that they do is a nonprofit for the city to advance affordable business space and housing for our citizens. So you can see those numbers there, and as was already in the works, we are expanding our social media work for the year 2022. The reporting then goes into individual projects. I won't go with them item by item, but I just want to touch on a couple real quick, and primarily around the rail trail. Our department has done a lot of work to prepare the city for some major investment in the rail to trail connector project through the city of Fairmont. We have a four and a half mile gap, and we believe in the year 2022, we may begin to close up to one to two miles of that four and a half mile gap. So we're just waiting for a few, few things in the works to be finished up, and then we'll make official announcements on exactly where and how that's occurring. Designing's not been completed or anything. We're still at the phase of negotiating the property for that primarily, which is the biggest hurdle for constructing this project. But we've done a lot related to that as well, including giving out share rows on the road. We have the wayfinding signage that Public Works Department is going to be putting up here in the spring, which will help you find the rail trail much easier and navigate your way through town. And ideally, we hope to get people to our commercial corridors, Fairmont Avenue, downtown, Merchant Street, Morgantown Avenue. We want people like him, we want them to see our businesses, our shops, and the amenities and opportunities that Fairmont offers to them, so hopefully they keep coming back and visiting if they're not from here. And just as a great point about that, the last time I went out for my own trail ride as an avid cyclist, I met a group of five people from Washington DC. I met a group of five people from Washington DC on the east side. They came out into the city Fairmont for the very first time. So this happens on a, and that's what Long River Trail Conservancy, who manages the Trail Pass Perplexport, will report to. We see a lot of tourists that often go unnoticed by our businesses and citizens. And so we're trying to make it even better for them to get into the city and find our businesses and to hopefully come back and visit, and maybe even stay here, or move here and work here eventually. So we're continuing to work on that. The other thing I want to just note is the expansion of our GIS and mapping. We're trying to get as much information out to the public as we can, and the city expanded our online mapping so much that the company we do this through gives us credits for the data that we have to host on their servers. And we exceeded our limit by about four hundred percent in the last calendar year. We were just putting out as much information as we could, so we had to actually put a stop on at the end of twenty twenty-one there. But then here in twenty twenty-two, we will wrap that up again and continue to get more stuff out. With population density maps, zoning maps, you all's positions. If somebody brings a major subdivision, they're mapping it to you all. Also get posted online for folks to see. You can see the NDA one, the recent one we did, is online and visible for everyone. Same with board zoning appeals. So, and our most used map, and I think it's because election season's oncoming, is the city council map. So we've actually been getting a lot of use as of recently. We go into each of the different boards and commissions in detail. I just want to make one note, and that's about the board of zoning appeals, in that when they were hearing variances, the majority of them had conditions placed upon them, which I think from most legal recommendations is a good thing. That means the board of zoning appeals is working as intended and are holding these property owners accountable and trying to set the minimum standard required when they grant a variance. So they're trying to make sure that, that when you set these conditions, it's usually things to try to prevent that, like the exceptions to the rule from having negative impact on someone. So they have been very vigilant about that. I think the last time we approved anything was a driveway issue, and I think they put four to five conditions all about approval that the homeowner had to meet just to get the one variance. So they are doing a very good job and are respecting the rules that you all recommend the city council approves. So I just want to give a shout out to our other volunteers who work on the BZA. There's a chart in here for the summary of the grants that you can see we applied for, and that's on second to last page, sorry, third to last page of this annual report. And as you can see, we are trying to obtain more grant funding. The abandoned mine lands grant relates to rail trails. If we can secure that from the state, we are optimistic. And we should hear an announcement about that spread. It'll be one point four million dollars, which we estimate is enough money to build the rail trail connector extension all the way from the current trailhead at the Edelmont neighborhood edge, the city limits, down next to industrial resources, all the way to downtown as an independent trail, General One Street, Royal Hall. So that's very exciting if we can obtain that funding. It'll also cover for the setting and the planning of Eastside. We're not forgetting Eastside. They are a critical part of that. We have other things in the works too on Eastside, where we're trying to get that planning built out as well.
Still have that problem with that one section of Eastside trail containing the property?
We, we are working with a multitude of partnerships at this moment that have come through and are assisting the city and trying to get that resolved. So I'm very happy to say that. Because of the sensitivity of property negotiations, I don't want to announce who or what is exactly wrong in that detail. But we have, we have had a lot of people step up to the plate to help the city to hopefully get that resolved and get that quality trail knowledge there. Yep, it's, it's been difficult. But we, we also believe, and this is what our department's done, in the event that we would be road blocked in one particular location, we have identified two to three off-road routes for every section of rail trail of the city. So even if we get stopped at one place, that's fine. We're going to go with Plan B and then Plan C. So we're not going to let this project come to a ground call anymore. We're also applying for another half a million dollars in EPA brownfield assessment money. This can be used in a broad array of land areas, primarily to hopefully identify contaminants on property, mainly the small buildings to identify the asbestos and lead, to actual like industrial sites to identify contaminants and be able to identify good and healthy reuse of that property. We had a four hundred thousand dollar grant before that we're just now completing, and so we're looking forward to hopefully being awarded this half million dollar one, which has made a substantial impact on our community, especially on commercial properties. And then there's some other smaller grants there. You can see some smaller dollar amounts. But just to mention the Vowers grant is part of what's helping us with the playground equipment that Valerie had mentioned earlier. So the Vowers organization out of Mannington granted us twenty thousand dollars for our playground equipment. Mick Park had granted us about nine thousand dollars for new basketball hoops that are going to go up soon at Windmill. Rail Trail Conservancy gave us two grants last year, so thank you to them, both related to rail trail work. We're going to do a promotional video, and the other one is assisting with those current property negotiations that I was mentioning earlier, where we're trying to acquire the land either to build the trail. And then we had Terazac funding that the city gave to United Way to assist citizens in the, to prevent their utilities from being shut off or from being evicted due to not being able to make rent during the pandemic. So that was a great thing that United Way assists us with, and I just want to give them a thank you as well. Then there's a quick overview of some charts on our marketing communications where you can see our demographics and our outreach on Facebook in particular. We didn't, we couldn't generate the data off Instagram. Because of the way the Facebook Business Suite works, we were only able to generate the Facebook information, so we listed that here for you all. Facebook's still approving that, so we're hoping we have better graphs and things to show you in the following year. But we've given that there just to give you some insight on where people are. And just as an example, forty-three point eight percent of people are residents of the city of Fairmont that we know of. And so that means through social media, we're reaching a lot of people outside of our corporate limits. Which is a good thing. We're promoting the city and the things happening here. So in conclusion, I believe that we were able to accomplish much related to you all's purview and the comprehensive plan, and we're going to continue to strive to get all of those goals met that you all set for the city back in twenty eighteen. So if there's anything in particular that you think is a higher priority and we need to address in the near future, I'd be happy to hear so. If you, if you all as commissioners want any additional information reported out in the future, our department will do that. So if you please just let us know. Basically, you're all secretary in a way, so if you want it, we'll get it. And I'll make sure to report it out to you all now. So hope I didn't keep you all too long, but that's fine. Not so brief summary of the annual report.
Anyone have any questions for Shay about that annual report? All right, the last thing on the agenda is stack updates.
Yep, I'll go forward. Talking about going forward and what we want to accomplish in twenty twenty-two, I just want to let you all know what we're putting our eye on and hoping to accomplish. We are hoping to completely revise the city sign regulations. Most business centers do not find the way the rules are currently written conducive and easy to understand. That's usually one of those contentious points when I help a new business center when their business is trying to understand and navigate our sign regulations. So we'd like to revise those and format them in a way that's easier and tell you what we're considering, what we have a draft form of already, but it's not finalized. Essentially, if you want a sign, it'll be a one pager of information. If you want a wall sign, we'll print off one sheet of paper that'll tell you everything you need to know about a wall sign. If you want a freestanding sign, you print that, you print one sheet of paper about that. Or a projected sign or an illuminated sign, so they can say, hey, what type of signs are you interested in as a business center? We can just print it off little one pagers and hand them to those business centers so they can more easily make the best decisions for their business and feel like they understand what we're asking them, what they can and cannot do. So we're hoping to get to that. As well, some of our sign standards are outdated based upon US Supreme Court decisions recently. So we are looking to get those updated to be aligned with those Supreme Court decisions. If this doesn't validate our current sign code, it just means we have to be extra concerned in the way we address certain types of defined signs at this point in time.
So are you looking at making the code just easier to understand? Or are you looking at, other than the Supreme Court issues, are you looking at changing any of these regulations? Because I, I think we've got some really restrictive sign ordinances in, in Fairmont that really prohibit business from being able to make their business visible and advertise. I mean, I'm not looking to make it Las Vegas, but I think our sign ordinance is a really restrictive.
We are looking to change some regulations, and not just to make it more readable and user friendly, but we are looking to amend some standards. And I can't say at this point in time whether I believe that will be more permissive or less permissive. I think it will be a mix. As the way I've brought the amendments to you all so far, it's been a bit of a mix where we regulate some things more, some things less. I think that's probably how it's going to end up with the sign code. I have some ideas personally, as a professional, about what I think should be less. But we'll wait after I finish doing some more research and verify that that's a good idea or not with some other professional opinions on that. So, well, I think that's what we're going to do, Commissioner Blitzer. We also are going to look at developing the rideaway and street standards. That's a requirement of the cop plan. And for the zoning code type that we're trying to accomplish, this hybrid zoning code, where we actually regulate the design of the streets. So we tell you whether you should have sidewalks or shouldn't, or how big they are, or street lighting or no street lighting, or how should there be parking lanes or no parking lanes. This also will help guide the major subdivisions and new housing developments or annexed areas in those corporate developments. So we have a unified standard of what we expect out of the streets with a multitude of options for some flexibility, especially given the topography in Fairmont, the challenges faced with that. So we hope to get those written up. Those will be in our development section. And then we hope to improve the development and major subdivision standards. There are requests for that. In the cop plan, I have not identified the exact changes at this time, but we hope to address that later this year. Improve historic, historic design standards. Another thing that can get contentious sometimes with new business owners is what the historic design review commission regulates and doesn't. So we're hoping to have that conversation. And then we hope to have, just as a user standpoint, improved graphics across the entire zoning code. Modern zoning codes are usually very picture oriented, and that has proved to be more beneficial for the public. No one likes to read paragraph upon paragraph regulations, and sometimes we have a nice simple graphic that summarizes our intent or how to read and understand what the code is written out. But that'll often help them with our, with navigating and feeling comfortable with our zoning code. So this way they can own a home or a business and land here in the city with confidence. So we're going to continue to work on that. Those are our five goals. If you want to come to.
Any questions or comments? Shay? I'd just say that anything we're doing to help people understand the zoning code is great. All right, we have made it to the last thing on the agenda. Entertain the motion to adjourn.
Have a good one.
I think to Mr. Blitzer and, is it a second for Mr. Straight?
Yes.
Second for Mr. Straight. All in favor, say aye. All right. Thanks, guys.